To order. And pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, in the faithful faith of justice for all. On this land, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one in the faithful. Roll call.
Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor Fortin Rivers.
Here.
Ottoman Green.
Here.
Ottoman Mandray.
Here.
Autumn Woman Jones.
Here.
Autumn Woman Hopman.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, any public comments will be three minutes or less.
We got Andrew Spearing who's on the phone, so, Andrew, do you want to go first?
Sure, thank you so much, this is Andrea Spearing, 16617 Jamaica Beach Road. First off, I want to thank Anna Mundergon for being very accessible and being able to respond to some of my questions prior to the meeting. I really appreciate her ability to be contacted and to respond to questions. Regarding the zoning variances, I agree with the Board of Adjustment that I think setting a precedent for a swimming pool is probably not in the best interest of our city moving forward. And then I just had a question and a comment on the beach permit that's being requested. I know Mayor Morris, you kind of ran on part of your vision for Jamaica Beach with a park-like setting for our beachfront. As I sit on my porch, I can see no fewer than twenty trashcans on the beach. If I go to the seawall and look at Galveston Beaches, I go to the State Park and look at their beaches, they have a trashcan every quarter mile at the most. And I'm hoping that part of this permitting will be to require people to be personally responsible when they use our beaches. And I hope that there will be a lot of public, um, opinions solicited in any beach plan moving forward. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to attend a city council meeting via phone. I appreciate that with the rise in COVID cases occurring at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Ginger Jones, 16612 Carly. I'm not here to force my opinion on anything other than to wish y'all a very merry Christmas and a happy, happy New Year. And thanks for all the hard work.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was disconnected.
It's okay, Mr. Spearing, but you want to stay on the line?
Yes, please.
Next item, uh, will be consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Looks like there is only one motion. So approval of minutes of regular city council meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one be attached. Do I have a motion? Discuss? Any discussion? Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next we have a special presentation by Mr. Chris Reed and with Gilbert Signs.
Yes, sir. So, thank y'all for the opportunity to come back and visit with you again. You know, we were briefly here maybe a couple, couple months ago and, and, uh, you know, it was tabled and, uh, you know, thought it might be a better time where, where we could devote a little bit more time to answer some of y'all's questions. You know, I printed out, you know, just a kind of one-page sheet bullet point to outline, you know, what we're looking to do and what some of the benefits would be. You know, there's, uh, there's a lot of rules and regulations, obviously, where you can and can't put signs. You know, we liked, we would like to have, have, have something on the island. You know, initially, whenever I called in to, to just inquire about it, um, you know, I was told that, that the city had been looking at possibly, you know, building their own digital sign and or purchasing their own digital sign, but it was quite expensive, obviously. And so, I was asked to, um, you know, we did that type of thing, which we do, we have a number of digital signs around the Houston area. But, you know, we would, we would fully fund it. You know, it would be a digital sign, there would be roughly, you know, seven, uh, eight-second flips per minute, you know, is, is, is how the cycles go. And we would, um, you know, donate one of those eight-second spaces to the city of Jamaica Beach. And, you know, you can use it for anything that you want as far as messaging goes. You would have something coming up once a minute, basically. You could also have multiple messages running. So, you know, if there's a lot of information that you want to get out there, you know, maybe there's four separate messages that, that you would have and it would just rotate, then you'd be able to change those out anytime you wanted. So, um...
But they would rotate every four minutes?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But, you know, you could have multiple messages in that rotation. The first minute, you know, welcome to Jamaica Beach, the second minute, you know, please keep our beaches clean, whatever you might want to put in there, um, you know, COVID, emergency messaging, anything along those, those lines. I mean, anything that y'all decided you wanted to get out there to the public, um, you know, we could design for you, we would get it, you know, turned around pretty quickly, probably within a day. You know, if you called us up and said, hey, we want to, we would kind of get this information out there, you know, we could probably usually have it, have it up within a day. So, um, you know, local business promotion, obviously, um, and, you know, we would, uh, we would be responsible for, for all the costs. We take care of the, obviously, the permitting through the state. We have to go through text to get a permit too, uh, if it was approved. And, um, you know, any of the maintenance, electrical, we'd have our own meter box. I mean, it would, it would, uh, all the costs would, would, we would be directly responsible for.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, can you remind me of the size?
It would likely, it would likely be a twelve-by-twenty-five foot sign, which is, you know, when you go down the interstate, you know, the standard interstate signs you see are six hundred and seventy-two square feet, they're pretty big. They're, the, the dimensions on those are fourteen by forty-eight. This would be smaller than that.
How, how would be?
The height off the ground.
Oh, the height off the ground? It'd probably be about... I'm sorry, uh, the height, it'd probably be about thirty, thirty-five feet to the top of the sign.
So, we would have a sign blinking like three thousand six hundred times over one hour. Thirty-six foot up in the air. Well, I mean, if you have an eight-second flip.
Over...
A minute.
Yes, sir.
And a minute times sixty, we got thirty-six hundred.
Right.
Little messages.
Right.
That'd be, had me going to convulsions, I think.
Okay. No, we did, we have talked to a couple people in town, you know, we, we haven't, uh, I think the last time Russell, you had said, you know, we need to probably make sure we're on the same page with the city before we sign anything and, and get a deal in place with any property owners. So, we, we have not done that, but we do have a couple pieces of property that, that we're looking at. You know, theoretically, on the very edge of town, coming into town, um, you know, you may not see that thirty-six hundred an hour, you know, it would just be for people coming into town where you could...
I live on the State Park, I guarantee you, I'll see it.
Yes, sir.
Just as the moon's coming up.
Yes, sir.
And it would be very bright, I know those days are digital, the LEDs are bright, reds and blues.
Yes, sir. Yeah?
I'm just, I'm just thinking...
That's true. That's a hundred percent right.
It's, it's a lot of light.
Yes, sir.
So, this thing is, you said it's twelve foot, it's twenty-five foot long. And it's twelve foot wide.
Correct.
And it's thirty-five feet up in the air?
And that, and we could, you know, that's, that's generally, we'd want to get it up in here, but, you know, we could lower it a little bit, I mean, we're, we'd be somewhat flexible on that.
Twelve and thirty-five, so, three stories up in the air. Everybody can see it from there. I could see it from...
Yes, sir.
Do you normally lease the property for you?
Yes, sir.
Is there a normal lease term, a time limit?
Yeah, um, you know, generally, we, whenever we're working with a property owner, um, you know, we, we generally either offer a lease or an easement purchase. Easement purchase would obviously be, you know, just like the electrical easement or a pipeline easement, you know, it would be, it'd be forever. A lease, we generally have the thirty-year lease term.
So, we have, we would have this thing for thirty years?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any other sizes? Do you have a smaller size to offer?
I mean, we could, potentially, uh, you know, we, we kind of have a couple of, of uniform sizes of signs that, that we build and we try to keep it fairly uniform. But, you know, I mean, I guess that would be something that, that, that we could potentially...
Please discuss.
Yes, ma'am.
And do you, off the top of your head, can you, give me an idea of the smaller size?
Maybe a ten-by-twenty? A ten-by-twenty-five?
Just nice to hear some options.
Sure, sure, yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir, I would like to say, I mean, you, you know, we're, we're, we're out of Friendswood, um, obviously the offices, so, it's a pretty quick trip to come down here if, um, if y'all wanted me to come back and, and had questions during the day or for another meeting, um, you know, we're happy to do it. We appreciate the time and the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, have a merry Christmas.
I wonder how wide that, our building is across there.
At least twenty feet.
At least twenty, so we're talking...
About that size, that wall.
Pretty damn going big, I'm going to... Brought in three stories up in the air, so, if they want to get the most advertisement they can from the distance.
We're having, uh, we're moving to our public hearing now. Discussion, consideration.
Neely?
Oh, I'm sorry. We had someone else to speak? Okay, I'm sorry.
Please, please come up.
Oh, I received, well, I think I'm out of turn here.
I know, you're fine.
This has to do with the variance next to my property.
Are you wanting to speak?
Not, no, I, I hadn't registered for that, I just wanted to deal with the variance. My apologies.
Well, now, this, that's your time to speak.
No, no.
To speak about the variance.
Yes, now is your time.
Now is your time to speak.
Please.
All right, I, I live at sixteen-six-oh-two Jamaica Beach and they're building some property and they're asking for an approachment of six feet into an eight-foot easement. And, um, I wanted to register an objection to that. My, my biggest concern, of course, uh, there are a number of concerns. One is it starts getting a little compressed, uh, which is bad enough, but then firefighting and any emergency work that has to be, uh, you know, uh, the easements need to be adequate to accommodate those emergency, uh, people, personnel and whomever. And so, that was, uh, uh, you know, a big objection to it. And of course, they mentioned the swimming pool and chemicals that are involved and the equipment of the swimming pool. And whenever you bring that into the easement next to your property, you have the noise and the, of the other things that may go along with it. So, uh, then the general aesthetics where you have spacing and balance between the houses, it's pretty uniform in the area. And when you upset that uniform, that uniformity, it just looks a little awkward and certainly can affect pricing whenever the resale value or that sort of thing. But my main objection is, is more along the safety and concerns that that might have when you have a pool a couple of feet away that emergency people can't get to you.
Are you immediate, sir, are you immediately objectioned?
Sir?
Where's your property in relationship to...
Next, next door. There, I, I, I guess it would be east of my property.
Okay. Yes.
That's on Pelican, correct, sir?
Sir?
On Pelican?
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing.
Pelican Road. So, you're right, you're, you're in one of these right here?
Pelican Road.
You're right here. Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, sir. Next, we're moving to our public hearing, discussion, consideration and possible action to consider a variance to the provisions of the city of Jamaica Beach zoning ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero seven. The homeowner is requesting a three-foot variance to the twenty foot front setback requirements to allow the erection of an air conditioning platform and a six-foot variance to the eight-foot side setback for the location of the pool and pool equipment. And it's in attachment in one. May I have a motion to discuss?
This is the public hearing aspect.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, you're actually, actually right. And this is where he... Is there anyone else?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, yes, please.
My comment would be, um, I don't live on the canal side, so this does not directly affect me. What I am concerned with is setting up precedent within the city of Jamaica Beach. Uh, I totally understand the variance for AC. When most of these lots were planted, AC was not a thing. And with our flooding, they do have to be raised up, I understand the variance for that. However, a variance for a swimming pool sets a precedent that, um, encroaches not only on safety of adjacent homes, but also on noise and privacy of adjacent homes. So, I support the Board of Adjustment in, um, their concern about a six-foot variance out of an eight-foot easement. That brings that pool very, very close with flooding and with erosion. I think that will have an effect on neighboring property.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, uh, go ahead, Ms. Spearing.
One-six-five-oh-two Jamaica Inn. It would definitely have, uh, potential impact for sale of that property, if six foot of their property was gone. When that person got ready to sell, it would be very difficult.
Okay.
You want me to come up there, here?
Oh, no, you talk.
Okay. You know, if it was only going to be an eight-foot easement and they only wanted a foot or two, I could see that, but that's more than half of what the easement is. And I agree with, because those machines and things that run the pools and stuff, those can be noisy. And, uh, I just, I, I'm not for it myself, but it's your decision.
Thank you. Is anyone with a builder or homeowner here? No? Okay. Okay, well, uh, I guess next we'll go into our next public hearing. Uh, discussion and consideration and possible action to request to consider a beachfront construction certificate and doom protection permit in the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas. Location, Beach Comer Drive, Buccaneer Road and one-six-seven-three-four West Beach Road, Jamaica Beach, Texas. See, uh, the other attachment. Looking at anyone here? Have questions about that? Concerns? Ms. Anna, would you like to speak?
Yes.
This is the public hearing aspect, this is going to be under our regular agenda, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, we come up on the regular agenda, this is a public comment, right?
We still, so we don't need her to, to talk here, we'll talk, she'll talk, the next one, right? Okay.
But I don't see it on our regular agenda. Am I just... When we normally have the public hearing and then we discuss amongst ourselves kind of regular agenda, isn't that proper protocol?
Correct.
So, I don't know how we add with that.
Well, it just has to be a different meeting.
That's right.
We can't put this on much longer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, uh, I will schedule that for January fourth. Or January third, I should say. January third. Okay, now we go to our regular agenda. Discussion, consideration and possible action to replat of lots three and four of Jamaica Beach, section twenty-nine, into one lot, being a lot, a subdivision of Galveston County, Texas, according to the map or plat thereof, reported in volume sixteen sixteen, page one oh seven, and later transferred to a plat reported seven, page ninety-seven, in the official public records of rural property of Galveston County, Texas, commonly known as one-six-six-zero-five Pelican Road, Jamaica Beach, Texas. And Ms. Anna, you would like to address that? Ms. Anna, please.
This is a very basic replat, it's taking lots three and four and combining them into one lot so they can place a pool that would not infringe on any setbacks. As you see in the staff report, all the procedural requirements were met, all the city ordinance, uh, the planning and zoning. Looked at it on a public hearing on November thirtieth and they approved it. And then we are within thirty days of the application to bring it before, before you guys, as, as our ordinance calls for it. Our, our staff recommendation is that the replat be approved.
And this, and this is, the, the second, make sure no one's getting confused, this is, Pelican Road is two different, is different...
We have a lot of things going on on Pelican Road. If y'all would like to see the, the replat, uh, this is a copy of the MyLarn. And all the fees have been paid by, by the, uh, the homeowner.
It's not, no. It's across the street, that, no, Pelican is quite busy.
Correct, yeah. There's a, a little better, uh, of the two lots in your packet.
It's on the last page, isn't it? Yes, it's on the last page.
That's it.
Yeah, you can see an area of where the house is and where they're looking at the planning.
Any other questions? Well, we make a motion to vote?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we count the votes to approve the, uh, application.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any others? Thank you. Hammer Director's reports now. It wasn't laid off. She gave everybody a hand down.
Yeah, you have a, a copy of, of my report, so just to give you, uh, what was done in December thus far and kind of what we have coming, coming up. I've been really invested with FEMA, there's a lot of, uh, grants that are coming to, to an expiration. You'll see in there, Sean Hutchinson applied for a grant for, uh, for a tropical storm, Laura. The, the grant that, what, he applied for a low of twelve thousand dollars, we, we were denied about three, but we were granted nine thousand two hundred and, and some change. I, I do have to complete a couple things and then we will be able to get that money back. I'm completing the, uh, winter storm. Brad started the winter storm project and then I'm completing it and then putting in additional hazard mitigation things, like the, the trees on the explanate, seeing if we can remove the, the dead trees on the explanate, generator for the fire department, uh, maybe a, a pump for the lift station, so several things that I'm putting in there, and, and the water meters that we, that we have that are deficient, so. You, you know, like, like with the Laura grant, we asked for twelve, they'll give us nine, we'll take whatever they give us. I'm completing action worksheets for the hazard mitigation plan with the county, conjunction with the county, uh, that's going to be due on December twenty-ninth. And that sets the groundwork for us to apply for several grants. We normally FEMA and the Department of Agriculture and all the, the entities that look at grants, they want to know that we have a plan for what we're asking, so they always want to see that in the hazard, in the mitigation plan, we already have outlined the things that we have asked for. So, we're, I'm submitting that to, uh, to Ms. Norman at the EOC so that she can get us in the, within the plan for the, for the whole county and then we'll be updated. Grants, uh, I reached out to Ms. Stephanie Fontenot with Grant Works and she explained to me, uh, kind of where we sit as far as the city. We've got a couple things that, that kind of ding us. One is our low, low to moderate income ratio, we're not at the, at the level that most granting look for, which is fifty, over fifty percent, and we're like at forty point, something. And then the other thing is because our, our commercial area has FM three double oh five, which is a road that we have no control over, um, then that kind of thing, so it's a little bit, but she explained to me that there's a lot of other grants out there that we can go for. On the building department, we went ahead and purchased the software from I-War, right? This is going to let us, let our citizens go ahead and, and file for the apartments online, uh, look, look up and see if they passed an inspection or why they haven't passed an inspection, look at notes. It also has a module for code enforcement, so if there's a code enforcement complaint, the citizen can go in there and submit the complaint and then it can go to our code enforcement officer. On the, on the staff side, we're able to have access to that data off of our phones, we just go on the site and, and we can see who's being, who's got permits, who doesn't have permits. Unfortunately, a lot of our builders fail to put the, the permit out in the front of the house. And then the other thing is a lot of times you're allowed to do an inspection and the plans are not there. So, this will enable us to look at the plans and make sure that they're building what the plan was submitted or that was approved. It also, on the code enforcement side, it allows the code enforcement officer to look at all the notes. So, if I go and I begin a code enforcement complaint and then Officer Posey gets sent to that same address, he just looks it up and he sees that they've already had a warning or, uh, that we've been out there or the progress or lack of... and he sees that they've already had a warning or, uh, that we've been out there or the progress or lack of progress, because we are able to upload pictures onto it as well. And it'll generate the letters for code enforcement violations, so you don't have to sit there and, and type a letter, you just click what violations are and it'll be a standard, uh, letter that will go out. And that's, that's just in accordance with local government code as well as the ordinance that we have adopted. So we'll have consistency on all the complaint letters that go out. Let's see. We're looking at having that, um, ready on February twenty twenty-two, and Hitchcock uses the, the program Santa Fe and Dickinson are already using that program. Permits, we gave Plan Cal permits for November, eighteen inspections, and then, uh, you've got a list there of the plan reviews that were completed.
That's kind of short. The city's website is, hopefully, we're finding us in a couple of pictures, um, Owen, Owen Jones and I are trying to finish the couple of pictures that we're going to do. Hopefully, we've got that started on the first of the year, y'all see that go live. I've just recently upgraded the speed, the city internet speed, we were at eleven meg, the guy said we were kind of at a snail's pace. So now we're going to open it the next week and we'll see that we have fifty meg, so hopefully Zoom calls and all that will be a little faster. The STR is in the final stages, hopefully we'll finish that, we've got the, the two portals ready, we're just working on the last one of actually being able to get the link fixed where we can, the residents can go in and actually pay. You know, we've got the two boxes, they've got to work out the last stage of, of them signing in to pay their, um, their quarterly, um, tax. We've converted to Office three sixty-five, um, here shortly, this week hopefully I can send out each one of y'all an email. You will have a actual city email, you can go back to your first, you know, there's a mail. So hopefully this week I'll be there for you, and you'll set your own user name and password.
Owen's report.
Just to recap the, almost at Halloween. Moving on to the next holiday, uh, the Christmas event was really well attended at the park, I think everybody had a great time. The golf cart parade was well attended, the boat parade was well attended, um, I think everybody had a good time, so. Kudos to everyone that helped, um, and we'll probably do some spring cleaning and get the, uh, storage shed a little bit further organized because I don't like it the way it is still, but that's just me. And then we'll work on, uh, the playground equipment and the pickleball courts for the spring projects.
Thank you. First, um, Anna, I need to tell you how much we appreciate you and all the hard work you've done, the agenda packet is beautiful. It has pictures, it has details. I, I almost had no questions for you when I came in, because you've answered everything ahead of time, it was beautiful. I, we, we, I and the citizens of Jamaica Beach appreciate all of your attention to detail. And I appreciate you taking the time and answering my one question that I did have about it, it really made it, helped me understand it a lot better. So, um, thank you for putting into little people terms for me. Um, Debbie, I need to, um, thank you too for bringing our city into the current century. Thank you. So we have, um, email and the new city website's going to be, it's going to knock your socks off compared to what we have right now, it's going to really be exciting. I look forward to that. Marcy, everybody left for Christmas, thank you so much, and thank you, Santa. Kudos to everyone for volunteering, that's all.
I don't, I don't have a report to, to session.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I've attended several meetings and events, nothing really sticks out. I would like to inform the citizens about what's going on, just to the west of us, there's been lots of gossip going along. The gentleman from the RV park bought the very end of adjoining to our city, Bob Smith, and right now he's getting free dirt from the city street, three double oh five street project. So right now, all the traffic, what everybody's seeing is they're bringing in dirt, just buil- building up the easement road going from front to back. So maybe that'll provide for some clarification. Other than that, nothing of relevance, I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday.
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Chief? Thank you, Mayor. I want to get as short and sweet as I can, just want to, uh, upgrade a couple of items that, uh, that you have yet to hear about. We have had, uh, um, everybody knows Mark Posey, who's our now, now warrants and code enforcement officer. He's ex Coast Guard, uh, law enforcement for eleven years and was, uh, ranked, uh, very highly with the Coast Guard. We have him involved as our liaison with Homeland Security. In such, uh, we have qualified for the initial application for a, uh, basically about an eighty-five thousand dollar marine vessel, uh, through the Coast Guard, uh, for our, uh, adjoining them with the SAR program. So the city of Jamaica Beach for Emergency Action Plan is now, uh, joining forces entering, entering an MOU with the United States Coast Guard to make, Jamaica Beach, the SAR, uh, location, that search and rescue location for any type of emergency events that comes by. They're, right now the Coast Guard is having to travel a load from their headquarters on Pelican Island all the way over the west side when they, when they launch. And this will give, um, a centralized location for SAR right here in Jamaica Beach. And to us, it just enhances public safety, part of that also gives us, uh, the opportunity to be at least qualified to apply for these type of applications. So, um, as twenty twenty-two gets here, we'll be, uh, getting further along in that, there are several stages that we have to go through to, to get that, um, grant approved. Wanted to just, one more time, um, and I know you guys know how we feel in the police department, but, um, it is truly an honor to serve these citizens. And you've got us, the mayor and council here, we've always backed public safety here and, and it's greatly appreciated. And I just want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, last, uh, when the new website comes up, what we're going to start doing is having a direct link to the, the monthly police statistics through, uh, the website. So, uh, any citizen can actually enter that and look at all the police statistics.
Fire, no fire report, I guess the last one's a hot report. Twenty twenty-one, we've done a lot and we're getting there, working a lot of details, uh, it's been very successful. And, uh, next month, uh, the town hall meeting, we'll be, uh, presenting a game plan for twenty twenty-two. We'll be looking for input from city council and citizens at that time. And we'll be discussing what we've started and completed in twenty twenty-one, um, and what we've accomplished. Other than that, I'd say everybody have a Merry Christmas and me.